It's 11:30, and I think I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order of the City of Norwood's Financial Planning and Supervision Commission. Thank you, everyone, for accommodating this rearrangement today to the schedule. I'll ask the Secretary to call the roll, please.
Mayor Williams?
Here.
Council President Lake here. Mr. Schwartz. Mr. Shepherd.
Here.
Mr. Vandeheer.
Here.
Ms. Longenecker.
Here.
And Ms. Snyder.
Here. We have a quorum. Next on the agenda, we have the meetings minutes from January 25, 2018. Those were sent out to you in advance. Are there any changes or corrections to those? If not, do I have a motion to accept the minutes as submitted? Ms. Longenecker, second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Approval of the minutes. I'd like to now turn our meeting over to the financial supervisor, April Davis, and to Anna Mary Thomas, who are going to walk us through a brief financial report, a current financial report, and an update on the status of the accounting methods. Then we'll get to the meat of our meeting today, which is the update to the Financial Recovery Plan.
Well, I'll address the report on accounting methods. I can tell you that we did start a section. However, the person that was assigned to that section resigned from our office, and so we will have to go back through that section. And at this point, due to the amount of time that we have spent assisting with the recovery plan, we will not jump back on that until June 1st. That will give the city time to file their financial statements that are due at the end of May. So we also have a contract to assist the city with those financial statements. So now that we can jump from the recovery plan, we've got to get caught up on our help with them for the financial statements in their 2017 year-end report. So again, that due date is the end of May, and as soon as that is filed, then we will jump back on the report on accounting methods.
What are the reports that are due at the end of May?
It's the annual financial report.
Got you.
And since the city files GAAP, they have 150 days from year-end. So that's due at the end of May.
Thank you. I'll defer to you, Ms. Thomas.
Okay. I guess we're doing the A and B. A is a listing of all the funds like we do at every commission meeting. And the ones that are darkened and highlighted are the ones that are still negative. The only one in February was the general fund at $868,000. Then on B...
Can I just briefly ask why we jumped $400,000 from January to February? Do you know?
I don't know off the top of my head. I'd have to look, but it could be in advance. I don't know for sure. It could be income tax.
Yeah. Well, I was going to just say it's probably the fact that you ended with a relatively...
Carryover.
A carryover. But then you don't have a lot of revenue coming in because you're not going to get your property tax dollars. So in the next... County auditor says you're supposed to get tax settlement next week possibly. So then you're going to see it go up by probably a sizable positive amount. But then as you spend out monthly expenditures, it's going to go deficit.
Thank you. B is the reconciliation that we also provide at each commission meeting. It just shows the bank balances and the adjustments per reconciliation with outstanding checks and so forth. And there is a reconciling item of $10,000, which is actually less than it was. And the treasurer's office is continually looking at these items and bringing things to us. And we are continuing to look at this as well. Any questions on the monthly reports we do? We did not provide any revenue or expenditure reports. First of all, because the recovery plan is being updated. So it would be hard to show recovery plan versus actual when we're actually changing that potentially today. So that was not in here, plus it's the first of the year as well. So we will provide that at the next commission meeting. Any questions on those? I guess now we'll go to the meat of the program, I guess, which is the recovery plan, which has been approved by City Council as of last week. They had many, many meetings over this. They had councilful meetings plus other meetings that we've had with different department heads and so forth to get this updated. We really dived into personal services as that was an issue from the last recovery plan. We had bigger variances than were projected. If you looked at in our January meeting, we kind of noted some of those in the expenditures versus the recovery plan items. So what I'm going to do is kind of hit some of the highlights. You can ask questions as we go along. I'll try to answer them if I know. I do have my notes to make sure I remembered most of the stuff, so. First one is the general fund. The basic assumptions, I want to go over first, and then we'll get into the numbers. The assumptions start on page four of that document that you have. And the financial statements are after page eight, I believe, nine. Income tax, there is a decrease from '17 to '18. There were bonuses paid out from other companies that were done in December of '16, and those collections were in January of '17. That was not the case for December '17 into '18. That's why you see a reduction there. Going forward for 2019 through 2022, there is a 1% increase projected based on some talks with the treasurer's office.
So can I ask?
Yes.
Is 1% reasonable? I mean, like, because, you know, most people get pay raises each year that are 2%, 3% or higher. I understand when you get the bonuses. I don't know how much that accounts for, but...
To us, it's reasonable. We really want to be very conservative when you get into the revenue side of the world. The years that that hasn't happened, there's been things, companies who have left said area. When you have a company leave, that usually takes a large pot of money with them. So it's better to be, in our minds, conservative on the revenue side. And the 1% seems reasonably conservative going forward. And it was similar to what was done in the last recovery plan. Hotel tax increased. The completion of the hotel, we've kind of talked about several times, was in the fourth quarter of 2017. And so you didn't see those collections till the first quarter of '18 because that's when they're due. Intergovernmental revenue. This changed if you compared it to the prior recovery plan in the historical period and in the forecast. There's a safer grant monies that came in that was actually under other revenues originally. We have moved that up in the historical period under intergovernmental revenues. In 2017, they only got around $90-some thousand, I believe. But in the first part of 2018, they received around $390,000 on this grant. It was a request finally for reimbursement on salaries as that was a personnel grant for the fire department. We do not expect any more monies coming in this year or forward. So you'll see intergovernmental revenues actually go down. We are still researching this grant. I have been provided the documents, and we're still looking into it. But they did receive $390,000 in January or February of '18. Another change to the recovery plan is other revenues again. Cable franchise fees, if you've been watching some of the council meetings, I think that's been discussed in the finance. The cable franchise fees for Cincinnati Bell have been deposited in the general fund, but that's going to change from 2018 through 2022. That's now going to go into their PACE fund, and you'll see PACE on the listing of all funds. That's where Time Warner's franchise fees actually gets deposited. There was a definition clause in the original ordinance on why Cincinnati Bell was, I guess, posted into the general fund, but that's going to be moved going forward. That money actually goes to the cable channel for Norwood. And if you have questions on that, I'm going to defer to Donna. The rest of the revenues are remaining consistent.
How do we get money from that? Do we get paid a franchise fee?
Yeah. Do you want me to answer an hour later?
I love it. I have nothing to worry about.
Okay. So in the past, Time Warner Cable was the only game in town. And so in order for Pace, the Norwood Community Television, to televise all those meetings, the cable companies pay a franchise fee. It's a certain percentage, and you see it on your bill. And so that money would come into the city, and the city would give them half of it. And then at the end of the year, if we didn't have any expenses, which we never do in terms of cable, then we would give them the rest of the money. When Time Warner Cable was the only one in town that came in, we knew that it was from there for that, and it was put into their account. Then when other companies started coming around, now Cincinnati Bell uses the same cable lines for their cable franchise. And so they are required to pay the same franchise fee, but they would just send us a check from Cincinnati Bell. And it got deposited into the general fund. Nobody knew what it was for. There was no explanation as to what it was until Norwood Community Television started asking, "Is Cincinnati Bell not required to do the same thing as Time Warner Cable?" And so they wrote... Jane Grody and I, who sit on that committee with them, advised them to write a letter to council. It went to the law department, and they discovered that we should have been giving them that money. That's what it was for. And so there was $58,000 for this year. That is now going to go to them. And from this time forward, that money is now going to be segregated out of the general fund rather than doing money in and money out.
Before Anna Mary moves on to expenditures, I just want to make sure that you guys still see. If you look at the property tax line, it's consistent. I have personally called the Hamilton County Auditor's Office, and we cannot get an estimate on what property tax numbers will be. I was told first half settlement will be out next week. So we'll take a look at what that settlement is and devise an estimate based on that.
Yeah, it's surprising because, I mean, I knew before year-end how much I owed.
They will not give us a number.
Yeah. Okay.
No one wants to be wrong.
Sure. I did have one question on other revenue. And this was just, I have some friends that are contractors for the city. Just something to point out. They've said compared to other cities, like the amount that Norwood charges for permits and this sorts of things is pretty low compared to City Cincinnati and other jurisdictions. I don't know how much that would account for, but has anybody looked into potentially, you know, what we're charging its market? And maybe there's reasons why we want to be below to spur investments and, you know, community development. But just one thing that I want to point out that I've heard from friends.
We are constantly looking at that. Our street opening permits, all that is all considered. And our operating permits. And be quite honest with you, for a long period of time, we was moving not to discourage people from building and contracting. And one of our main goals was to speed up the process. So that will be looked at.
And there's recently been communication from the building department on that very thing.
Yeah.
To have council look at those fees.
Yeah. From what my friends were telling me, and some, depending on the permits, that's significantly lower than compared to City Cincinnati, and some of them were slightly lower. So I don't know, but it'd be good to look at that.
And were three times as efficient.
Yeah.
Any other questions on the revenue part of the general fund? Okay. So expenditures. I'm going to go over what's happening overall, and then we can look at certain departments that I think I need to point out. Okay? Based on the assumptions on page five. These costs in 2018 for personnel is based on current union agreements and current health insurance premiums. So the 25% increase that was seen coming into 2018 is actually within the recovery plan. Going forward for 2019 through '22, there has been a 15% increase projected on health insurance for each year. So it's building each year from '19, '20, '21, and '22.
25 this year and 15 forward?
Yes. So we saw a decrease in '17 with the new insurance company they went with. As we've talked about before, the premiums had to go up this year because the insurance company actually lost money, and there wasn't too many options for the city to go with on health insurance. So that was a 25% increase. We felt 15% for each year was reasonable based on some, the past two years. It could be up from that. It could be down from that. That's really hard to project. We really doubt it's 25% for next year. But, you know, if it is, we'll have to relook at the recovery plan at that time. There's also been updates to personnel in different departments, and I'm going to point those out. And that's from 2018 through 2022. That's from looking at where every personnel, each person is and where they're charged from, from departments. That was a sit-down with me and certain department heads here at the city. It does include step increases, but this does not include base increases. There is also separation pay that is estimated for the police and fire departments within the recovery plan. Some other expenditure items to note before we go into the departments.
Could you explain the step increases, base increases?
Okay. So base increases, everybody gets a 2%. Everybody gets a 1%.
Wages, expenses across the board?
Wages.
Wages?
That is, those are examples of a base increase.
Yes.
Got it.
That would be built in within union agreements, which they will go to those in this year for 2019. The union contracts are over at the end of this year. They have to follow those negotiations until they approve a new union contract, which is where we are with the police department at this time.
Okay.
Sorry to clarify. So police and fire, we have a contract in place between now, everybody gets to the end of the calendar year?
Fire, all the unions do except for police. Police is running on the old one because they have not approved a new contract. It's still been ongoing.
Can you go to arbitration?
We went to arbitration, yes. You went to arbitration.
We went to fact-finding, and the fact-finding favored. Basically, what the fact-finder discovered or rendered his opinion was, "This contract will extend."
Yeah.
"Till the end of the year." He couldn't, you know, he didn't make up his mind for whatever reason. But the police contract just extends till the end of the year, and then everybody comes up at the end of the year.
And so you want to expand a step increase?
Yes. That's next. So a step increase, our increase is built in to each union agreement. So it usually is based upon what level you're at here at the city, what job, and then however many years you've been here. And each union contract is different. I know the one goes up 15 steps, and after 15, you're kind of capped out, and that's your...
So we're anticipating people moving up in steps. And when they move up in steps, they get a higher wage.
Correct.
And those wage increases are reflected in our forecasts.
Correct.
Got it.
Or you could have officers, we're hiring officers now, firefighters, they would come on at a starting salary. And then after a year, they would get an increase. And after another year, they would get an increase. Or you would have a promotion, or somebody gets promoted and goes up.
And so what we're saying is we're anticipating those movements, and we're accounting for the additional cost in our budget. Got it. Thanks.
Okay. So other expenditures. There's a 1% increase in most department. That's contractual supplies, materials, and stuff unless there's a catch.
So can I ask about that? So is the 1% pretty consistent year after year?
But it's rounded to the neth- hundreds. So if you went through, you would see one...
I just wanted to see, okay, if it's been 5%, 6% in all the prior years, but we think it's going to be 1% this year.
We did 1% in the last recovery plan as well, to be conservative. There has been built in for 2018 completed purchases for the clerk of counsel, law department, and the police department. There's also been air conditioner purchases for the auditor, treasurer, and building departments. And then there's an increase in the civil service department in 2018 through '22 for testing and hiring for rank and other positions within the city, based upon what we talked about while we were here. Now, before I go into the future actions, I want to get into the actual departments and point some things out. Along with the step increases, longevity has also been placed within here. So you get longevity pay per contract after so many years of being in service with the city, and that increases like either $25 or whatever the contract states, depending on what department you're in. So those are also within the personnel services expenditures, which was the same as the last time. Clerk of counsel. This personal services went up because last year we had a contractual person in here.
I want to go to the page that's general fund on the first page of the forecast under expenditures.
That's been a contractual person for the last two years. In 2018, they have hired a part-time person now to fill that position. So you'll see personal services in there along with other employee that was there. That's the reason for the increase. Part of her pay will actually come out of civil service as well, which we'll get to when we get to that department. If you see increases to personal services, and I don't tell you of a reason why, then the reason is the health insurance that we already talked about. Okay? So but I'm going to point out the other reasons that you can't tell from looking at this, I guess. Okay. The next one would be prisoners' house outside of Norwood. There was no expenditures last year. That was a little unusual. We did decrease this cost going forward. It was much larger in the last recovery plan. We have had expenditures in the past. We do not feel it is a good planning tool to say zero at this time if they have to have someone housed outside of the city. But we will relook at that again at the end of the year. The law director department, personal services, you'll see a change in that one. We've talked about this one some, too. They did have a full-time secretary in the first part of '17. That person left. They had an opening until July, and then they hired somebody in July full-time and was paid out of that department 100%. Going into 2018 through 2022, that full-time person will be a split of 35% paid out of the law director's office and 65% paid out of land and buildings, as this person also does IT work for the entire city. So that's why you'll see changes in the personnel services line in the past going into the forecasted period. Any questions on that first page?
So we had this person in the past, she was 100% law director. Now this replacement is being split out between the different groups, and that offsets the 15% or 25% increase in health?
Okay. So if an employee does not take health insurance, then that is not built in. So that actual person doesn't have health insurance that we're talking about.
But in general, do other people though in that group? I'm just thinking...
I'd have to look.
Okay.
Those were all built in. So when I, when we looked at personal services and I sat down with the city, I actually have who is in every single department and who should be charged back. I also have what are they, single family, or there's a different one, too, in the family and what they actually pay. And so that was all built in based on their individual benefits, all that they get per the contracts and such for every department. So if they would have a benefit, it would, and if there's a split, it would be split between the different departments as well. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Any other questions on that page?
Sorry. So the 65% was where?
Land and buildings.
Thanks.
Okay. So the next page, you'll see the auditor's office at the top. The treasurer's department is one I'm going to point out. They actually lost a person at the end of 2017. Going forward, we do have somebody placed in there. I don't believe anybody's been hired to date. But the person who left was at single coverage, and any positions open to be filled have been estimated at a family insurance rate because that would be the highest that they would have to pay. That doesn't mean that they will take family, but we want to make sure we cost it at the top cost. Does that make sense? And that will be going forward throughout the forecast. The same thing for the earnings tax as well. They lost someone mid-year. They are looking to put somebody back in that. We costed that out at the top cost of a union person at their step levels there and at a family insurance rate. That's why you'll see 2018 increased over '17. But we did not put it in for all 26 pays. We put it at less than that, depending on when they... I think we had it for April. If they don't bring somebody in before that time or by that time, then they would have less costs. But going forward, that person is projected out for a full year in '19 through '22.
Can I go back like to the treasurer? Just looking at the percent increases. So treasurer from '17 to '18, that's a 15% increase roughly. Is that all healthcare?
No. That's the employee I was just talking about.
Okay.
So they lost one at the end of the year. They had, it was a single coverage person. The cost is still the same at the rate, but at a family insurance for that. So there's a difference with that. And then the increase for the insurance rate of 25%. And then going forward, it's an increase of 15% on the health insurance rates. Does that make sense? Okay. Civil service, this one, you'll also see an increase. We talked about that under the clerk of counsel, the part-time person would have some hours charged under this department as well, as she will be doing some work for this department. Also, the contractual went up in this one. And that's from the testing that we talked about under the assumptions that we went over earlier for rank and positions for the city. And those are costed out going forward. Does that make sense? Okay. Any other questions on this page? Those are the ones I wanted to point out. Okay. The next page is where we start with the police administration. And then we have police, crime. As we've talked throughout our commission meetings, the numbers are down in the police department and more down in 2017. The forecast in 2018 was built to bring in more people to a staffing level that was requested by the city. The personnel that's built in there, we have, the new ones coming in would be at the base rate with family insurance coverage coming in because that's the highest cost. And then union agreements were used for the other costing for that. And then also separation pay is built into there. The separation pay is much higher in '18, as they already saw around over $200,000 of separation pay paid out already in the first quarter of 2018. That's probably why you see a decrease going into '19. The separation cost is estimated as high. Also, in the police, there is required evals that must occur for new employees, so that cost is in there. And then there have been service agreements on like the radio lease that they have to now pay a service portion of that yearly going out with the radio lease. Half of that cost is built into the police. Half of that is built into the fire, as those two departments are paying for the lease agreement as well.
So can I ask maybe just the principal and interest that looks in this year, the $12,000 on the crime, police crime control?
Yeah.
Is that the lease you're talking about? Or is this new, yeah, I mean, bought new cruisers?
That's the one, but the new cruisers. That's projected going forward. The leases are under the fixed expenses. They're the radio lease. And they actually are paying off an old car lease. We just left it under those. We put the principal and interest for just the new one under principal and interest there.
Is there also, as part of that fact-finding agreement?
Oh, yes. I forgot about that.
There's a 2% bonus that we were required to pay. A one-time 2% bonus. That was about $62,500. That's also included in those expenses.
Thank you. I forgot that, even though I have it here.
Between our two notes, maybe we can...
The capital outlay that is on here as well. They have two used police vehicles are looking to purchase, and those were the costs that were given to me from council to purchase two used to help the need of vehicles for the police department.
That's the $8,300?
Yes.
Okay.
So compared to our previous plan, the totals are about a half million more each year. Is that to bring the staffing levels up that you described?
That's the health insurance.
And health insurance.
And then the staffing levels as well. So, yes. Anything else on the police? Before I move to the fire? Okay. One thing that occurred, you'll see an increase in fire administration. The fire chief was actually in the wrong department code key. He was being charged down in the fire department. We have made a correction in 2018 to bring the chief up to administration department. It's still in the general fund. It was just under the wrong key. So that correction has been made, and you'll see that projection going up from there. But I wanted to point it out, that's why there's a decrease in the two years and then an increase in '18. The fire department, we took the chief out of that one. We're leaving the levels as is, but from 2019 to 2022, the staffing level is expected at 48. The severance is in there that we talked about, but it's less than what the police because the police has been, had higher severance payouts in the last two years than fire has. But these are the two departments that regulars see severance payouts from when they retire or resign. Again, this, under the contractual services, they're paying half of the service agreement on some things, one being the radio lease. That service agreement is now in existence for eighteen. They got a free year, one year, and now they got a piece of severance going for, or service agreement going forward. Any questions on the fire department?
Anything principal and interest on previously approved?
Yes. If you see principal and interest until we get down to the bottom and in other the departments, those were the expenditure you guys approved, so. Okay. Anything else on that page?
I guess the public works, superintendent of public works, is like a thirty-three percent decrease?
Okay, so we did have part-time workers that were here regularly. They actually were moved to full-time under the, we had some people leave and so they were put into a full-time position so they come out of this key and can go into a different one. They filled positions that were open and we added them. We've talked about, we talked about adding them full-time in the last recovery plan. I believe in under the city garage if I'm correct.
So they went from part-time to full-time, but when they get a full-time, they're accounted for somewhere else?
Correct.
Okay.
Anything else on that page?
And the principal and interest for the, of the garage is for the truck that you, that you all approved?
Correct. That truck will be paid from the general fund and other funds. That was in the ordinance that you guys approved.
Right.
Okay, so the next page has community center at the top. One of the things I wanted to point out from there is there was an employee paid out of a wrong key for this one and we have now fixed that for two thousand eighteen. The benefits were actually paid out of the, this key but not the, the wages. So that's been corrected for eighteen through the year.
Which department is that?
Community center.
The top one.
She had moved from another department and they didn't switch her salary from that department to the new one. She was paid out of the old key.
Yes, that's been corrected. Public land and buildings, we kind of talked about this, but this is where the sixty-five percent of the one employees paid from law director is getting paid out. Since that was a contractual services at one time, under land and buildings, you'll see a decrease in contractual services in eighteen going forward with a slight increase. That's the big things there. Also, under health medical services, the personal services there had four employees. Two of those employees really should have been under the other health department, which is on the next page. So you'll see a decrease of those personal services in eighteen, but those personnel are actually in this health environmental and you'll see the increases on the next page. Does that make sense? Okay, so they didn't go anywhere, we're just under different departments to better show their purpose or their expenditures.
Did you hear that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Anything else on the community center page, questions?
Just the parks and playgrounds, personal services come to zero.
That there's zero? That's being handled under other departments. It used to have personnel under parks and playgrounds and really I think it's the street departments that kind of help with at the city garage and do some things. There isn't really set people that are parks and playgrounds.
We have parks and playgrounds, people at public works.
Well, yeah, so they're, they're being paid.
They're being paid out of public works instead of parks and playgrounds.
Okay, so on the next page with the health and environmental, some of the bigger ones to talk about here was the retirees healthcare and C nine trust. That was left at the same recovery plan items. We'll get into that with the assumptions on the next page. The settlement of claims, we had a settlement last year that we talked about, the twenty-seven thousand dollars from a lawsuit. None was projected going forward. It's the first time they've had to do that in a long time. If we project that, then we're kind of saying they're going to lose a lawsuit. So until that would occur, we left that at zero. Real estate tax, there's a, several properties that they own that are delinquent on property tax and they cannot get the exemption until those delinquents are paid. So in two thousand eighteen, those parcels are getting paid off except for two. And those were the two that they did a agreement with the county to do a payment plan. So the payment plan is included in eighteen and going forward on those two parcels.
So will, will the property tax payments be reimbursed or are they just gone?
The, you should, the city should see some money back when they get their settlement, but they're not going to get all of that back because you got to give to the schools and to the library.
Sorry, so we're, we're, we're applying for, we will apply for an exemption
Right.
once it's paid off.
Right, the law director's already been in contact.
Will the exemption allow, be retroactive?
No. You have to pay all the delinquent taxes.
And they stay there.
And, right, until that, the county won't even process the application until there are no taxes owed on those parcels.
Okay.
And then it's hoped that some of those properties can be auctioned or sold or whatever, but we can't move on those until the property taxes are brought up to date.
Okay.
And that's already in finance committee looking at how we could go about disposing of those properties. There are some folks who are interested in some of those properties already.
Okay.
We've, we've had some thoughts on that. We have one individual purchased a lot on Grove Avenue and built a nice home down there and it fits right in with the neighborhood. He's also interested in another lot and so we're, the idea was that one person had the idea, we'll assemble them. Well, you, how do you assemble lots scattered all over the city? Which, you know, doesn't make any sense, but what we were, having, having these builders, these rehabbers come in and get these lots and build homes that conform with the neighborhood. There's a design package that was just submitted this morning. So that's the intent is have developers come in, purchase the lot, get the lot and build on that lot with homes that conform with the neighborhood and with some incentives like a CRA, you know, or something to get them and do it. Because the property in Norwood is moving at a, at a fairly rapid rate and there are some developers that are interested in doing just that. So it's a way of, you know, having lots and then have somebody come in and build a, build a place that works in with the neighborhood.
Another item on here I'd like to point out is the debt service principal and interest that's on this page. It's zero in two thousand twenty-two because the last payment for the debt is made in two thousand twenty-one. So that line follows the amortization schedule. That takes us through that page, is there questions on that page?
Just go high level, looking at the forecast for twenty-one and twenty-two. So I see we're at a loss of one hundred sixty-four or two hundred twenty-six. I was looking, I didn't see any big jumps, what's driving that?
Health insurance.
Health insurance, okay.
Okay, so the last page of the general fund has the recovery plan items. And per the assumptions that are on page five, they go kind of hand in hand. There's still a review being done of nine-one-one, that's in process. I've actually talked to the person who is working on that to make sure that we take into all accounts, all the variables. There is nothing to, as far as I know, talk about at this time as that review is still going on. There's lots of moving parts and pieces to that, that's why it's at zero for now, but it's still being reviewed. The review of the retiree health insurance is still on process as well. They're still fine-tuning some things until that is accomplished. There's no real money value to put on that yet, but that is still in the works and hopefully before the end of the year, we have something come to fruition, which Donna can talk about later if she would so desire. One of the new things is we had this in there is a review of current employee health insurance. City council wanted to put fifteen percent payback on health insurance premiums and that would be by all employees who receive insurance with the city. That would also have to be done through union contract negotiation, but that's their intent going into those negotiations. And so that, since that is their intent, it was built in as a recovery plan item.
By payback, you simply mean like employee contribution to healthcare premium?
Yes. Movement of street employees from the street fund. So when we get to the street fund, you'll see some of that. We're moving those employees out of the street fund and into the general fund. They were allowed to be paid from that fund, but the intent is to open up monies in the street funds to allow for street repairs that are needed for the city. So that's one of the expenses you'll see planned out of the street fund and into the general fund. There is a street people that are actually being paid out of the water fund. We're moving those into the street, or into the general fund for expenditures and we're moving one a year for that until we get them all into the general fund. There's movement of lighting, the street lights from the street fund, which we'll see that when we get to the street fund, you'll see those expenditures coming out of the plan, out of that one. Again, free up monies in those funds and we've moved them to the general fund. And actually, we are one of the ones who said that that needed to occur based on an attorney general's opinion, I believe.
That's correct.
On streetlights. The same thing on the movement of light, streetlights from the state highway fund. You will see that coming out of the state highway fund plan and those expenditures move to here. The last two are reduction of fire and police personnel. What that really entails is a reduction of three out of both fire and police. This is staff. This is estimated cost for an employee, three employees from each of those departments. That would include base insurance, shift differential, Medicare, dental, optical, all those things, clothing allowances, pensions, that is a portion that the city would have to pay. That is a low estimate as that would be the lower end base salaries for those departments. And that was the intent of council that they approved.
Is that something the union has to agree to somehow?
That has to go within the union agreements, yes.
So you said fire is up through the end of this year?
All of them.
All of them.
All of them and the other one, yeah, okay.
So that's the intent going forward. If that would not come to fruition, we would definitely have to relook at the recovery plan for these items. That's why they're built down here as well. As you can see, if you put these recovery plan items into play, they do become positive in twenty, twenty-one and twenty-two. Any other questions about the general fund?
I'd just like to comment, the, the movement of the street employees from the street fund to the general fund and likewise for the water fund. I think anything we can do to make these clearer and truer and more intuitive can only help those who have to manage finances do so. And so I love seeing this, assuming it drives clarity. And I'm wondering whether there are other things that ought to be done so that street fund means street fund and water means water.
The only other thing, I mean, I think this round of looking at the recovery plan and making changes, I will give praise where praise is due to the mayor and council because they dug into this and sat down with Anna Mary and went through every personnel that is charged to this city. That's your biggest cost in any department is the personnel cost.
Sure.
So, you know, getting those fine-tuned and making sure that we're showing true department expenditures is the start.
Great.
You know, moving the street lighting, that, we brought that to, to the mayor and council that, you know, hey, we don't think you should be paying that out of the street fund, you know, with gas tax monies. So anything else, I mean, I think it's really been picked through. I'm not saying there's not room for, for more looking, but now that you've got what I would call the low hanging fruit, you know, the, the personnel cost and looked at that, then, you know, start looking at what you're paying for as far as, you know, materials and supplies or, or contracts or copiers, maintenance, any of that type of stuff that could, you know, be shared between departments.
Well, the major point of my message is congratulations and applause for clear, clearing a bunch of stuff up.
I mean, at a time when you're in fiscal emergency, to do that is tough, but I think we need to let people know, these are the true costs.
Yeah.
And to, and to put it into a street fund when our streets are falling apart doesn't make sense.
Right.
We need to, we need to save that money. We talked about how much money that can open up and we apply for grants. I mean, there are some, the safety service director was wonderful at getting grants from the Ohio Public Works Commission, but sometimes they can only be used in certain areas.
Yeah.
So there are certain areas of the, of the city that we would never be able to get those kinds of grants. But if we can apply for other grants where we have matching funds, we freed up money to do that now, so. There's a real, well, there was a real concerted effort on that part, so.
Nice work.
And here, there, I brought, I brought this stack of papers and I, and I would hope that somebody would come to me and say, I'd sure would like to look at that because it's, it's interesting. And if you go back to eighty and eighty-one in a fiscal emergency, you look back and the earnings tax at that time was one point seven. And allegedly, point three-five of that one point seven was to go for capital improvements. And they used it, they ran short and they used it to supplement the general fund. And so no equipment was bought, no, it was used to, to the general fund. And I think at that time, I think the city cut eighty-seven people. If you look at street maintenance, there was eighty, twenty-eight people there. Waste collection had twenty-eight, went down to twenty. Community center had twelve, went down to six. City garage had seven, went, I mean, there's, right now, public works, there's not enough down there to start a fight. So, you know, it, it was, they, they, they really made the cuts back in those days. And what continued was even though the cuts were made, our cost went up. And our, and, and I think they raised it to two, two percent on earnings tax. Our cost went up and there's, there's virtually not that much in income increased. So as the cost went up, they struggled again to find the funds. It, this happened two or three years ago after two thousand and eight. There was no additional funds coming in, so they struggled to find the funds. So they even took contributions that they made to the police and fire pension fund in order to, to, to meet our, our costs. Also, the bonds, there was a lot of money borrowed and bonds issued for street repair and, and went out fifteen years, which obligated us in, in bond retirement. And when they came due, it went down. So this, this is interesting reading. One of the things they recommended was personnel be trained in each department to look at the accounting part of it and to look at the budget. But they would be trained in each department to review it. I'm not the swiftest bear in the woods when it comes to numbers. I don't read line items and that. That's why we have Donna James and everybody else and Joe. So, but I mean, if, if you look at this, this is not an excuse, it's just the history. And what the city has done in order to maintain services, going back to eighty-one, they've basically robbed Peter to pay Paul and there was no in cost increase passed along to the residents and or anybody else. So after a period of time not wanting to pass cost on, it was doomed to, to failure. Plus the fact that in those days, the, the bargaining units negotiated with the city by ordinance. It's prior to forty-one seventeen and nineteen eighty-five. And when the agreement was made, they shook hands and, and the ordinance was passed. It's all changed now. Now, I hear all kinds of things, but for years, I don't care what you are or what your role is, the, the idea was to maintain service. So if, I would love somebody to look at this and, and, and take a look at it and see what can be learned, if anything, and try to understand the history of why we're at. Thanks.
We got the two other funds, unless there's other questions on the general fund. I will say I am very thankful to all the departments here, actually. I had many discussions and questions that went out and they were very prompt in getting back to me. So I thank the entire city departments for that as well as those who are key in making some of the hard decisions here. The next fund is the street construction and repair fund. This one was built with what they are doing now as far as expenditures. The revenues were considered held constant, more at the levels of fifteen and sixteen and not seventeen, just to be more cautious because that all goes with the state budget. The expenditures are with the personnel that were in The expenditures are with the personnel that were in there as the first of 2018 with their insurance coverages and the 15% going forward, just like the general fund. The fixed expenses is where the street lighting is being paid from, and the contractual material supplies is really just road expenses that occur in there. If you go down below, you have the recovery plan items. You see the movement of street employees. There's one in 2018, there's two in 2019, which is one from '18 and one more from, to '19. You still have the two through 2020, and in 2021, you have the third. There is a correcting of an employee that is in here, that's a water employee, and that's getting corrected in 2018, and you see those expenditures coming out each year. There's the movement of the lighting fund from this fund to the general fund, and you'll see that the fixed expenses match those amounts of money. And since that's not an expenditure anymore, those are monies added back to the fund balance. And then you have the current employee health insurance. They were not included in the movement of employees because the 15% would be paid by the employee anyways. That portion wasn't moved to the general fund, as that follows, that would be paid by the employees. With that in mind, that would get us potentially to a $2.6 million balance in the street fund by 2022. But there is a line that says review of street improvements. With the movements that they have done and expenditures, now they need, are going to be looking at what are the needs of the city, where are the biggest needs, how are we going to pay for that, and, and come up with plans going forward. So that's zero at this time until they figure out what kind of street repairs that they want to do and when. And that's going to take some evaluations by the city to figure that out.
Are we still considering a bond? There's some kind of, I think the last time we talked about for street repair, maybe doing some sort of?
There's probably several ways. I mean, you could, you could add something to earnings stacks, you could put a bond levy on, but only last for a few years. I mean, if you looked also, and the unforgotten thing, you know, we're going to have a massive need for equipment that's going to have to be addressed quickly. We just bought a paramedic unit, we bought one cruiser, and we're going to buy a used one. We have to look at a backhoe and a, and a truck. The backhoe and the truck are mandatory, just like anybody else to make, you know, to do the proper work. But this equipment situation is going to have to be addressed at some point. I know, you know, the numbers don't match, but that's what I mean when I said before, nobody wants to say it, well, golly knows, you don't want to propose raising costs on the residents. But that money's going to have to come from somewhere. And as you can see here, there's been drastic reductions in personnel in this city since 1981. I mean, at one time, you know, there was a lot of people working here. And when federal funds stopped, they were held on to, and handwriting was on the wall. But all of these issues are going to have to be addressed, the streets and the equipment. It's, it's just a fact of life. And how we do it, I don't know. It's going to take input from everybody to figure out a way. But once we get the, you know, the personnel issues settled, then we're going to have to move on and start having to address that. Because you, you know, without the equipment, you have the people, but if they have nothing to operate, you, you got a water hole, you can't give a guy a shovel, he needs a backhoe, so, you know, you need police, they need cruisers, and public works needs equipment. It's a fact of life.
Any other questions on the street? The next fund is state highway. It's really very similar to the street, except there's no personnel in this fund. The revenues are being held consistent based on 15 and 16 levels. The expenses in there are again for state highway. The fixed expenses are the street lighting that's being paid out of there, and that's the meltdown underneath the recovery plan items that's getting moved out of this fund and into the general fund. And so this one's going to see a positive bounce potentially of $195,000 by 2022. This is the smaller of the streets, and this is really more for state highway expenses. Any questions on those? Basically, that's the recovery plan that has been approved by the city council as of last week, and is up for, I guess, approval by the commission now.
Thank you. You brought Anna Mary to the hard work of Norwood. To the hard worker of Norwood that developed this. It's our job as a commission to approve or not this, this plan, kind of ask for questions along the way. Does anyone have any overarching question or comment they'd like to make at this point?
So, just a form of a general question of what the state allows. So, I know we're planning on some headcount reductions and passing on some healthcare costs along. If those don't happen, is, I mean, obviously it needs to be readjusted, but is there like a, can we show a deficit for a certain number of years and we have to show like some sort of?
There has to be improvement within five years.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
So, any one of these doesn't happen, we're not going to be there.
Right.
Yeah.
Then we have to, you know, go back to the drawing board of what else can, right.
So specifically to that, the second to last page of the general fund, the determining line is the very bottom line, true, that ends at half a million dollars short?
Good.
Half a million dollars negative?
Good.
Okay, so, so were we to stick with that, we would have failed.
Correct.
All right, and so?
Yes, we go to the next page, that shows if those things go through, we'll be positive.
Correct.
But those are the big items, obviously, if one of those goes away.
Right.
Or doesn't happen.
And the swing is 1.3?
Close.
Yeah, 1.3 million. It's the 540 plus the 758?
Yes. Over the 58, yes.
Yeah.
And the one thing that is in play right now that we don't have in there that would be closer to fruition would be the retirees' healthcare piece as well, so that's not been built in.
Those are your big money items, the retirees' healthcare and police and fire personnel.
So when do we think we'll find out more, as far as, like later this year, as far as 911, I don't know, we talked about that?
I can speak to the retirees later, if you want to do that.
Like later in a few minutes?
I was going to do it under my report, but I'll be happy to do it now.
Okay, no, no, that's fine.
No, I'll be happy to do it now if it will make it easier for you to swallow this report.
Sure.
Last year, we tried to get it passed, and it just didn't happen. There was a gentleman who screamed in the back of the room, this isn't a plan, show me a plan. I committed to council at that time that I would take that on as my personal responsibility, and so I did that. I looked at the ordinance, looked at my personal healthcare plan, developed a plan based upon that, presented a draft copy to council as a beginning discussion. We had a very good committee of the whole meeting, that was distributed beforehand, had a very good committee of the whole meeting. The only, there were very few changes that were made. We had a couple of questions that I have posed to the law department about terms of office, of how many, if somebody, there's two people to be elected by the membership, and should people get one vote or two votes, just simple things like that. Once that is reviewed by the law department and we have a final copy, it will come to council floor, and I suspect that it will be passed without much, without, without too much discussion. We've had a lot of discussion about it. We are, we're not going to pass it in one meeting. I think we'll have three separate meetings so that retirees have an opportunity to look at it, but I'm pretty sure Mr. Bonzel's here today, I'm pretty sure that most people on council were very, pretty much in agreement with it, so I don't see that it's going to be a problem. We originally said that the commission, the committee, the review committee should be established by November, and council said, no, let's do it earlier, let's, let's put this on ourselves, let's make sure it gets done. And so the committee will be hopefully formed by the end of September, according to this new plan. Our, our hope is that once it gets passed, we're, the clerk of council's office and myself are going to take responsibility for mailing it out to the retirees and beginning to get it in place. And once the committee, the review committee is in place, then it's theirs and we're ready to, to move on it. And it'll just be once a year, one-time payments, and we won't have to deal with, the poor, the retirees won't have to deal with the fiasco that they've had to live with the last few years in trying to get reimbursed. And then we'll know what our liabilities are, they'll, they'll be the same or slightly less each year.
And, and council can pass whatever plan they agree to pass?
Yes.
So the friction, the friction that is, I'm having trouble saying this correctly, the friction that, the opposition that could scuttle things is within council?
Yes.
Meaning I could be a retiree and, and jump up and down and scream all I want, that vote doesn't in the end matter. It is a council decision.
It's a council decision, correct.
Let me correct something. Council sits up here and makes these decisions, and it's kind of hard to explain with a roomful of people that have worked for this city for years, and you are now, after they were basically promised that they were going to get that retiree, but times have changed and we can no longer do that. I'm a recipient. I know that we can no longer do that. But that's, that's the main thing. Plus misinformation about anything was put out, and it put council in a really bad position.
Right.
It just, it just put them in a really bad position. So it's like anything else, if you look at the retiree healthcare, if you look at the healthcare provided to employees now, neither one can continue on the way they are. It's as simple as that. And so it makes it difficult for the people who sit here and vote yea or nay. And it's, you know, it's just one of those, it will happen, I believe it will happen, it's just going to be a little tough because the, two of the individuals working on this have been criticized by their, you know, by their own people. So these are difficult decisions that times have changed and that have to occur.
And I just, I applaud this council for taking it on. I mean, it's, it's easy to, in the past, it's been, we can't afford it, we can't afford it, and nothing's been done, and we decided we have to do something. And so kudos for this council for taking it on.
Well, I would agree, of course.
Okay. Any other observations anyone has at this point? The task we have at the moment then is to take this updated financial recovery plan and entertain a motion if anyone would like to make it to approve the plan.
I'll move.
Mayor moves to approve second. Mercy.
Um, forgive me.
No, no, this is the time.
The, the importance of passing this at this point is what?
That our 2018 expenditures are out of line with what reality showed us in '17.
Okay.
So it really needs that '18 adjustment.
Okay, all right, then I'll second.
I think we should have a roll call vote on this. Is there any more discussion?
Sure. Mayor Williams?
Yes.
Council President Lake, yes. Mr. Shepherd?
Yep.
Mr. Von der Harde?
Yes.
Ms. Longenecker?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
I vote a 1, 2, 3, 6, 2, 0.
Okay, very good. So we have an updated plan, and it'll be as we did with the first one, that we'll monitor it for the next few months, and we'll await council's actions, and all that is in motion, and if we need to make an adjustment, we will. But I think this does give us a good footprint to get through the rest of this calendar year. We'll need to pass this around for signatures right now, and then we'll give it to the auditor's staff. While we do that, mayor, we have a report on the agenda, if you wanted to give us any update.
I think I've about talked myself out of welcome. You know, the only update on 911 is that Mark is still working on it, he met with Anna Mary. And I will tell you this, as soon as that plan's complete, we will probably recommend that we go to council with it first before bringing it to the commission. I think that's the probably way to handle it. I, I would hate members of council to see that report come here before they even see it. So I, that's, my goal is to take it to council, probably at a committee of the whole meeting as, as quickly as possible. And like I said, Mark's worked with Anna Mary and working with the county communications director, and it's moving along. And it will be, will it be a massive savings? No. If we go to the county, will that be a massive savings? No. And what cost do we want to pay to save a little bit? So that's, that's the goal. So we'll have everything in place for council to ask and for this commission to ask.
Report of the city council president?
Well, just briefly, I, you know, the pace of the NOR community television we talked about, the retirees' healthcare. The only thing now is that once this recovery plan is, now that it's approved, we will be taking on, we'll be doing an appropriations ordinance that reflects this financial recovery plan, so.
Yeah.
And again, I just want to publicly thank the members of city council and the finance committee in April and Anna Mary for their help in getting this done. I believe this is a way more, a way truer, a much more truer picture of where we are and where we want to go, so.
Good.
Thank you.
Next meeting date, given it's April, we thought, well, we'll give it a month, four to six weeks, but the auditor's staff is going to be involved in May with preparing like staff analysis they mentioned, so that, we're thinking about the next meeting date in June. And if we go after the 15th, then we can have the previous month's information do for us. So one possibility is Tuesday, June 19th, with that.
It'll be out of country.
Yeah, okay. 26th, you'd be back?
I'll be back, yeah.
The 20, June 26th work for everyone. Why don't we aim for that then, for the next meeting of the commission?
Are you good with that date?
Is that okay for your time?
That's right.
Okay.
Same time?
11:30?
Yeah, if that's, okay, yeah. So we'll do June 26th at 11:30 a.m. And again, want to thank you for your flexibility in making today work for this. Okay, I think we can entertain a motion to adjourn. Ron?
Yes.
Mayor seconds, all as a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, very good, thank you. So much for the voting.